The warrants are circulated.
Okay, when the meeting is called to order, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I would make a motion that we go into executive session per 1 VSA Section 313A3 and invite a candidate for the DPW position to join us.
Rick, is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we are out of executive session. We have nothing to report. We went into executive session on personnel under 1 VSA 313A3 relating to employment of a public officer employee. We interviewed a candidate for an open position in town, and we have nothing to report. Now we are moving on to our public comment, and we have a couple of guests here. Is either of you here to make a public comment? Both of you are here to make a public comment. Okay, Barbara, I saw your head first. I invite you to join us up here.
Thank you. Happy New Year!
Happy New Year, too.
Happy New Year, please.
Okay, Barbara Lattler, Assistant Town Clerk. So Orca, it took a while for Orca to post their most recent, your most recent Select Board meetings. They didn't get posted until like the middle of last week. So it was the middle of last week that I watched them both, which is what brings me here, to stress the importance of please adhering to the timeline of the production of the annual report and town meeting. What concerned me was that you were, you guys were looking at it, and I heard the comment that it doesn't go to the reprinter until whatever date. The problem is that there's a huge amount of work that needs to be done on everything that's submitted for the town report before it goes to the printer. And even without what I'm getting ready to tell you, it's a huge amount of work. But what I need to tell you, that I didn't think you'd need to know, but you do need to know, is that our graphic designer is getting married in January and leaving. And so it's a real tight deadline. And if, and my real concern is that January 10th, so your, the last day to approve the budget is January 9th, and I have every reason to believe you guys are on schedule with that. The very next day, January 10th, is the schedule for the treasurer to get all the financial documents to the graphic designer, because she has only three days before her wedding to get everything set up and done. If, if you guys are not able to meet that deadline, we're simply going to need to turn production of the annual report over to the Select Board, and you'll need to find another graphic designer. The schedule is real tight, but that's the deadlines we need to adhere to.
Has she started working at all?
The things that I've given her, she, she's completely done everything that I've sent her.
So there are things that...
But the, the financial pages are like 22 pages in the annual report, and it's all those graphs and charts and everything, and she has to format it to make it fit on those pages. Without things carrying, without a big long chart carrying over to the next page, it's a lot of work.
So it's the January 10th?
10th. If you look on your schedule, January 10th, the day after you approved the budget, is the day the treasurer is supposed to send all the financial documents to her. So I'm just here to plead that you guys meet that deadline, because if you don't...
So meeting that deadline still works?
Oh, it absolutely works. That's the agreement we have. That's the agreement we have. It's just I didn't want, I want you guys to respect the work that it takes to put all this together, and the reason why we have a schedule of deadlines to meet.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
That's really, that's really what I needed to impress upon you. So, so when I say the treasurer, whoever of the, maybe the four of you is acting in that function, or if it's Wendy, that you guys are coordinating with her, because she has other work commitments through Nemrick. And she's not just available at the drop of a hat. And so you need to be coordinating directly with her, so that on her schedule, she knows that's a deadline she needs to meet.
All right, so we need to circle back with Wendy.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, that's really kind, just, and really truly, if you guys are not going to be able to meet, meet that deadline, it's, you're, you're going to have to find somebody else to do the annual report.
Well, okay, thank you, appreciate it. We actually had somebody here who offered to help us, so I have not forgotten that comment. I won't say the name of that one right now. Thank you, Barbara.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so today's the second. We're meeting next week, and we may end up having to just devote the rest of, you know, the bulk of, the bulk or all of next week.
I think we're going to have, I think we're going to have to do all of our January 9th meeting devoted to the town report.
Probably, yeah. But that's okay. Yeah, we have that meeting on our books.
Okay, great. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Barbara.
I appreciate it.
And Barbara, thank you for, I, I heard about all of your help during the emergency, so thank you for...
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Well, there were other people helping. I said, right here in this very room.
You've done a huge help in so many ways.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see the open positions spreadsheet and the posting that was on for a porch form today, but...
Yeah, Barbara did the bulk of the work, but she and I have been coordinating on that over the long weekend.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a huge amount of work, but I'm really proud of that spreadsheet. I hope you guys are happy with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for keeping the spirit in the community there, Barbara.
Thank you. Bye, Barbara.
Hi, Rini.
Hi, Rini. My name's Rini DeGussel, representing the Persephone Association. We sent you an email about the things that we're asking you to do, I guess, at this meeting, too.
Not at this meeting.
Okay.
We, we said we weren't, we would do the permit stuff on the 9th, not this meeting.
9th, okay, okay. So if we speak to you today, we give you time to warn it. Maybe that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's one of the things, yes, you know what these three things are that I'm going to say, is that you agree to, to give us the $100,000 from the ARCA money without having to put it on the warning, and that you do put on the warning the bond vote, so that that can go ahead on town meeting day. And while I'm here, I might as well...
So you said there were three things.
The other one was the DuPont signed permit application, which...
Oh.
Right, which is, like you said, Wendy...
Absolutely. And while I'm here, I might as well also put in a plug for the East Coast Fire District to give us the $60,000 we asked for, without having to put it on the ballot. Not as important as that.
Without having to put it on the town meeting warning. The press is here, I'm making sure he gets a break.
Okay, yeah.
Understands what the heck we're talking about, you know?
All right.
That's all. Thank you, Rini.
Thanks.
Thanks so much. Happy New Year!
Happy New Year.
That's a good one.
Okay.
Do I have two quick things?
From public comment?
No, there's nobody else here from the public, right?
I'm asked, no, I was going to move on to the two...
Two quick things that I had put on here.
Those two, actually, I was going to ask if we can do them as a consent. These, the two items that are action items are...
I didn't know if you'd want to, I wanted to give you some background on the town hall fund. We had budgeted last fiscal year $8,000 for the town hall fund. There was $5,000 in it, so Nemrick moved the $8,000 into the fund. The invoice, as is on here, is $10,250. So we are, we have enough money in the town hall fund to pay for this invoice, and the board has to vote to approve the use of the funds.
Okay, so that's the second bullet.
Yep.
Is approving use of the reserve funds for the work that was done to...
Shutters.
On the shutters, which are behind us. And then the other one that we can do, I think as just one motion, is, we discussed this last time, appointing Donna Fitch at a $20 an hour rate, not took C-1500 without coming back to us. And that is to organize, chase down every grant we've got going, and put it all on one spreadsheet or several spreadsheets with a summary, so that it's all in one place. And she's offered to do that work for us.
So I would make a motion to, for those two items.
I'll second.
Is there any other question or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
All right, budget.
Budget, all right. I brought the spreadsheet on my...
You have it electronically, did you?
I did, electronically, so we can see on the side from... I have it on my confuser. Can you get into it, Rick?
A second, let me see if I can...
And if you guys are pulling it, yeah, I found the town office budget request. Okay, good. So are we looking at the same one? Is it dated 11/9/22?
This is what we have in the share drive.
The one in the share drive for the town meeting has a new tab, January 2nd, 2023. And that...
You gotta go to the drive.
I am in the drive.
Oh.
Hold on, let's go back. Let's go up. There's a budget folder, 2022, so let's go back.
Is it under?
It's under there.
It's under 2023 town meeting. I think you got it.
Yeah, I gotta get out of there.
Yeah, it's right there.
Oh, 2020, 2020.
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay.
Is it, is one you put in there today?
I updated the one that's there, and I added a new tab.
So we want the... I will... It's in Excel?
It's in Excel, and I...
FY24 SVP budget whole draft?
FY24 SVP. So the one thing I will ask, Rick, since you're opening the same one I'm already in, actually, no, I opened it, I downloaded it so that I don't have to use Wi-Fi, but I will take notes in there.
Okay, I just want to be able to see...
I won't touch it, we'll do our...
Okay, well, yeah, and then I'll just save it back...
Was this under the town meeting?
Yes. Right there.
There it is, okay.
And it says that I touched it today. And then if you scroll down, you should have, there you go, you got the new tab. Okay, all right, yeah, we're all on the same page. I love when that happens. Okay, so we have, I think we should go, we should do, we should discuss salary items in executive session. We can report out what we're going to do, but I think we, we deserve, we deserve and people deserve for us to be discussing details in...
Well, and it's personnel related.
It's personnel, and it can be sensitive and whatever. So let's not talk about salaries, which brings us down to, I think we've pretty much, we've been through and we have numbers in everything except, do we have the copier maintenance agreement? We said we were going to move down to the town office.
Right, that's up, that's up under Select Board, right?
Right. What we're moving it is the note. We're going to remove it from Select Board and move it to town office.
It's line 17, you made a copier maintenance agreement.
Yeah, you got it.
Can we remove this one?
Well, she's going to do it, I'm, we're not...
Well, I'm just, I'm leaving it there for now until we...
Yeah, that's right.
And then we had...
You want to highlight this stuff so we know it, so you don't miss it later on?
I've got a note there, sure.
Okay.
But I'm going to do it, but I, as I said, I downloaded it, so I'm not working on, I don't have to work on Wi-Fi.
You want me to highlight the I am in the drive? You want me to highlight that yellow? If you highlighted it yellow, all the things that we might be relocating...
If you want to highlight it yellow, that's fine.
Change the font color or something.
Just do a highlight, that's good.
Okay, so then mileage reimbursement, why does that one blank? We use it, there's an actual...
Well, I guess, I want to look and see if there's, is there mileage reimbursement under town clerk or town office at all? I can't look right now until Rick's done highlighting.
Give me a second, I'm just going to...
Is it, can you scroll down a little bit?
Yeah.
Is there mileage under town clerk or town office? Because none of us put mileage in, and it's under the Select Board section.
Should be, we, we, well, the road crew would do mileage.
Well, they don't have hardly any miles, that would fall under the road, road section anyways. It seems like the road, the mileage piece should go under...
I made a note in my version that we're going to move this to town office.
I mean, it doesn't really matter, it's not that big of a deal, but if we're moving one thing, we might as well move that.
Right, we don't ever, we don't ever bill for mileage, okay. And then we have...
Okay, go back up to Select Board budget.
Yeah. One thing you guys, are you seeing, when you scroll down, did it hold?
Do I need it?
Yeah, and put a note, can we move this to...
I locked the town office, so you can scroll in.
Oh, yeah, I was wondering, I used to know how to do that.
You're welcome.
Excellent, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, so I'm on line 20. Yeah, wait a minute.
What you working on, Rick? Mileage?
Yeah. So, okay, and, okay, so then... So under CLG fundraising, we had a question about asking Wendy whether we should have numbers in there? Do we allow that?
Yeah, she's been out of reach for like the last, since the middle of last week.
Okay, I'm just going to put that deal as well.
So I'm going to call her tomorrow, because I got a couple of questions, other questions to ask her.
Okay.
How do you highlight? I mean, Rick and I know how to do font change, how do you highlight like you do there? I was looking for the fill. I'm looking for the fill.
The change bucket is highlighted.
Oh, the fill color one. I got it, it's different than...
Yeah. Okay, so Denise will, Wendy, talk to Wendy, I'm making that note, okay. And then we got some proposal on wages, land, land records, did, I've got Jeremy's document here, he did not... He didn't give us any?
On land records, he said $580.
Okay, where did that, I didn't see that, where did that arrive?
That was attached with his 1210 email...
Oh, it was another one?
Where he gave us his other proposal.
Okay, but that was the only one.
So now...
Digitizing land records, okay, so land records, where did you want to put in 580?
Right here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just going to, I'm going to highlight that yellow, okay?
Yeah.
So that we know we changed it.
Yeah, good. I mean, he's really going to need to...
Hey, Rick, actually, can I, can you not highlight things you changed? Only let's hi, please let's only highlight things that are still questions? Because the fact that you put a number in there isn't changed.
No, that's fine, no fill where there's no fill here. Just go back.
Okay, he needs to give us figures for land record, oh, that way, he needs to give us figures for land digitizing, survey maps, and vault shelving. He needs to give us some numbers for those.
I'm going to highlight those yellow, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you going to talk to him about that?
Yeah, because I'm probably going to have to go into the office to meet with Wendy. Okay, so just put my initials by there, DW, check with Jeremy. Okay, Lister's, now, Lister's gave us a budget.
They asked for a capital budget.
Okay, Lister's suggested, okay...
Wait, no, that was planning commission.
So Lister Wages, they put in $12,000.
And again, Denise, where did this arrive?
This is an email that they sent to us.
To all of us?
I thought so.
Do you have the email right there with you?
Yeah, I don't see everybody's name on it, but I thought so.
I looked today, and I couldn't find one. What's it called?
Lister FY24 Budget.
And it came from Jan?
Yeah.
I don't think we got that, because I would search Lister here. We, I searched Lister, I looked at emails from Jan.
And I think she came, didn't she come and talk with us about the Lister budget?
Give a date on that email?
December 9th.
Okay, so she wanted 12, they, not just Jan.
Right, Lister, 12,000. Map provisions, 3,500. Education and training, zero.
Hold on, let me catch up.
Oh, sorry.
Tax, map provisions, what?
3,500.
Okay, what is the name?
Zero.
Lister Education, zero.
Do you want me to do that, Rick?
I'm doing it right now, I'm in there.
I'm typing away in line here.
Software licenses?
Go ahead. Well, I have to do, and John's got it up on the, yeah, that's just...
Software licenses?
Software licenses, she has 1,500.
Okay.
Lister expenses, 1,000.
Okay.
Yeah, because she said, I'll be at the meeting on Saturday the 10th, answer any questions.
Should be, you want me to put that note in there?
No, no. I mean, and as we're putting these figures in, just so we're all on the same page, this is everybody's dream wish list.
Right.
And then when, then when we see the bottom line and, and have a heart attack, then we'll go back.
Which, yeah, we're going to have to talk at the end about when we, when we do that. We may, we may need a, I'm going to put this out so you can meditate on it while we finish. We may need a mid, midweek meeting.
I'm thinking maybe, could we meet on Friday?
I don't want to meet on Friday.
Well, it's a good thing I canceled my call in October for this Friday.
I had not, I made plans for the weekend. While my daughter is home, I don't want to meet on Friday.
You did?
I did.
I would, well, we can talk later, but when?
Yeah, I'm thinking we may have to...
Just let me know.
I'm, I, no, I cannot meet on Friday.
Tomorrow night, I'm, I've got another meeting for emergency, Denise and I, then...
Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday or Thursday.
We could continue this meeting.
Right, that's a good point.
That's an option. But like, can we move on?
Yep, so the next town treasurer section is wages section.
Yeah.
Audit, and we have numbers in audit already. Are those good numbers?
As far as I know, they are.
Okay. To link to...
That's audit.
That's line 495051.
Yeah.
What do we want now, wait a minute?
Yeah, town.
Are these good, the numbers in there?
Yeah.
4,000 and 3,000 for the town report and town audit?
The fact, those are not dummy numbers, we put them in, anything that's in budget FY24, our numbers we put in there.
Yeah.
At another meeting.
Do we have anything for the treasurer wages?
No, not right now.
Not doing that now.
Okay, tax collector, link to tax collector, that's set.
That's baked.
That's all set.
Elections.
Elections, that's another one to put, when I go to the town office to meet with Wendy, I can ask, well, it says ask Jeremy for numbers, so can you put that in?
DW...
Somebody put that in yellow?
Yeah, I will. Do you get, get numbers from Jeremy?
Yeah. Now, see, here, general office is where I think the copier maintenance thing and mileage should go.
We did add copying somewhere, yeah, it's down below, it's line 75. Can you scroll down? And 76, copier and copier maintenance.
Oh, dude...
Yeah, copier maintenance, the bring the, you have the numbers in there.
Okay, so we've got questions to ask Jeremy, okay, so that's...
Wait, hang on.
So are those the same numbers above, 1,100, 415, 645?
Those are no, there's no numbers under copier maintenance or opposite, yeah, there's a whole list that I'm seeing that you, ask Jeremy.
Yeah.
Okay. Is Jeremy aware that we're, and you didn't want to highlight it yet?
No, he will be tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm just going to, Denise, I'm going to highlight the general office, the whole chunk of it.
Yeah, good. That's perfect.
We want these guys.
I want, I want the whole thing.
I got it.
Okay, sorry.
So I just highlighted the whole section, not the whole section, the line at the top.
The header.
Right, header, okay, was that, is that enough?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that's a whole bunch of ask Jeremy. Fund appropriations, that's a big blank, I don't know what that is. I think we've said that before, we don't do this.
I can't see.
Line 83.
Is that for the conservation fund?
No, conservation fund is under conservation.
Okay.
I don't know, can you, can somebody highlight it and put a ask Wendy?
Building maintenance funds or sinking funds?
I don't know what that is. What is this ask Wendy? Okay, great. Technology, I think we want to put something, because we're going to use, oh, a wrong fund, never mind, I was thinking town office reserve.
We said, this is what we said, find out how much is in the reserve fund now, and what does it cover.
Yeah, technology reserve, that's an ask Wendy, how much is in there?
Which one, the technology reserve?
Yeah, 84.
Line 84. Yeah, I'm just...
I got it, Rick.
Okay, you did, all right.
And then town office reserve. And we're going to be using some of what's in the town office reserve, and I think the amount is, oh, no, maybe it's under, computer. This one we said, somebody, we were going to use some of the money from, from one of those things to help pay for, we're going to use some from ARCA and some from, for the cost contracting, remember that?
Yes, but that's irrelevant as to budgeting, because what we said, we already put a number in there, we put in 4,500.
Yeah.
And we made the comment to remind ourselves, this is based on the budget principle of allocating 1% of the building's value each year to the town office reserve fund.
Okay.
So that's for the office itself.
Right. Town office reserve fund.
Right. So that's done. But the digitizing, the cost stuff you were just talking about goes back up to that earlier section of digitizing records.
Right, to be clear, the town office reserve fund, the 1% has to be town office building, not reserve or IT or anything. Right, it should be building...
Town office building.
Major capian, basically, is what it should be.
Yeah.
Major capian.
Yeah, and I don't know if...
It's not a slush fund, yeah.
Right, no, it's for maintenance.
So I decided, I decided the word building.
Okay, so under payroll taxes benefits, can one of you guys highlight that? I want Wendy to fill in those numbers. Yeah, I think these numbers are worthy, perfect.
Okay.
DLCT dues, now where did I, I think we all got something from...
I have, we have, no, 3,300, based on Rick's calculations, 3,300 for DLCT dues.
Yeah, they were based on their letter that day.
Yeah, that was one we got.
Yeah, you had, those were the numbers we...
Right.
I mean, they gave us, they told us how to.
They usually do tell us so. Okay. Zoning administrator, assistant zoning. So we did constable health officer sheriff, sheriff sent us a, you know, an email, that document they sent us.
What did Tammy Leno suggest, this is constable stipend, and next to...
Tammy came here and made an impassioned suggestion, this is weeks ago, that we need to pay our constable more.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the actual FY23 was 3?
Well, that was because...
That was because?
Right, but...
Normally, it's 1,000.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, I see now.
Yeah, so, hang on, so the...
No, the budget, no, we budgeted 23, 2,000.
Right, 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 but it's...
So we only bumped it 400 bucks.
We bumped it 20%.
Right, 400 bucks.
Mm-hmm. 20%.
20%.
20%.
20% is a lot.
You got it.
Animal control, now, we have an animal control officer stipend in there for $4,000.
That's... We must have been...
We must have been hallucinating.
Yeah, why?
I would say we put in 1,000.
It says 4,000.
I know, that's what I said, why does it say that? I think it needs to change to 1,000.
Must have been getting tired.
Yeah, and then animal control expenses, that was based on our recent...
Wasn't it $1,000 a quarter? That's what we were thinking. That's what we were thinking.
That's a, well...
That's a lot, and it's, and it must have been a different day than we did constable, because those two don't square.
Animal control expenses, I think we put in, hopefully, we're not gonna have another year like we just had.
Well, just to be clear, the court, if you folks have read the decision with regard to the horse confiscation.
I think we all did, actually.
The court has said, "We are entitled to reimbursement of the stapling fees and costs and veterinarian costs that were necessary to, you know, provide the horses good care," so...
So, John, do you think a thousand for animal control expenses?
You know, I, I'm wondering if we should have maybe a little bit of a, like we do with the conservation, have a little bit of a sinking fund, and when it gets up to some number, maybe a thousand this year, but write a bill and then to a maximum of five, and that's what it said.
Okay, but then we have...
We don't know, a little latitude if we get into legality.
Yeah.
We have to put something on the morning to create the fund.
Right, so...
I did not know that.
So, we did make a note that this, this current expenses are based on horse stapling fees, twenty thousand is prorated on the assumption the expenses continued, but we didn't put in twenty thousand.
No, that's why I'm suggesting, you know, what do we wanna put in there, even though we're gonna probably get a lot of those expenses back, hopefully?
I think you're right, Denise, so let's, we've had bud, we budgeted this year for the first time ever, so, and we're gonna be, so, this is gonna be such a big increase in budget, let's... We put an animal officer control stipend in.
We had, we had before.
And I just took that animal control expenses down to a thousand. And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna just put a line through that comment.
Okay.
Only to add... I'll unline this piece. I'm making the comment that court decision allows us to collect reimbursement for our expenses.
So you're changing that control, animal control expenses, forty?
I did change, I changed the number.
Or did I say that?
And now I'm just, I'm just, I'm correcting the comment, it's like, it's like we had a different number before we had these.
Right, but I always see your comment, is what I'm saying, oh.
I said line G.
Okay.
Just to be clear, not to beat this one to death, but I'm sure everyone on the board understands, and folks listening understand, that the court didn't create a precedent through whole cloth in terms of reimbursement.
I'm sorry, I didn't say what?
The court, the superior court judge, Judge Mello, did not create a new precedent out of whole cloth. He simply read our established animal control ordinance.
Yeah.
And said that the ordinance that was legally arrived at and is proper under the statute provides for our reimbursement of these types of expenses.
Right.
And that was clear in the ordinance, so, he was just reiterating the authority, we already had best of the...
We gave ourselves, yeah. So the bottom line total didn't change? I should say twenty-seven hundred, right? For FY twenty-four, for animal control?
Huh, it's not a, it's not summing, it's doing something different.
Can I just click in once and see what the...
No, it's just entered, that number I can see is, was an entered number, and I don't know why it's not doing math.
What, can I just try something in there? See if it'll let me?
It will. Rick, are you able to enter the formula?
Working on it.
Okay.
There it is.
There it is, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, okay.
PC.
So, this one, planning commission asked, they did ask for a reserve type thing, do you have that email printed, Denise?
Yeah, they want to have a reserve fund created, which is, needs to be warned. Purpose of the fund is for such things as hiring consultant, to help with process, public program, gather information, renewal, update the town plan. And they're asking for five thousand for that reserve fund.
What's, what is the sequencing of, if we warn a reserve fund and it's approved this year, then can the budget that's approved include the first deposit to the reserve fund, or does it have to wait, it doesn't have to wait a year?
No.
It should, because they're coincident, right?
Well, we would be putting on a warrant item, asking for the creation of a reserve fund starting with this five thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred or whatever we put in this fiscal year.
So if it, and if it got voted down, then the number just would not go into the budget, right?
Right.
And that's essential, isn't it?
So does that, does the amount get, does the amount of the reserve fund get warned as part of the overall budget, or, I would say, yes, and then the separate question is whether to establish the reserve fund.
The reserve fund, right. Yeah, we didn't have any creation of a reserve fund recently.
Well, I made a note, and they're asking just for five thousand, which overall is a reduction, so that's nice.
Well... Reduction from what?
Sixty-two hundred. Planning commission, we budgeted sixty-two hundred last year.
Well, we had budgeted assistant PC, assistant wages at five thousand, right?
Right.
And education, training, two hundred, expenses a thousand, so now they're not asking for an assistant, they're asking for the reserve fund, so it comes out the same amount. Right?
Aren't they asking for five thousand overall?
They're asking for fifty-seven hundred, 'cause they want education and training, two hundred, and PC expenses at five hundred.
Oh, they still want those things.
So they don't want the assistant? I don't understand.
They said they don't need it.
Really?
Well, and I guess, you know, I don't, I've never seen them advertise for it, but, I mean, they didn't.
So they want the two hundred, and I'll just put the five thousand up there.
Well, we wanna change that to, to reserve fund.
I made a note, 'cause we still have to decide whether we're gonna warn that.
Right. Can you highlight that, PC assistant one? Thank you. Okay, now, conservation commission, yeah, we did put in the eight. I don't have any, um... They wanted ten thousand, right, conservation? And we put in eight, is that what I remember?
I don't think we got any communication from them, did we?
For the fund?
No. I think we said eight, and then they wanted us to add, okay, so we put in two for invasive, that was just kind of our guess. And I happened to be talking to Stephanie the other day, Julie Hand is checking with some company in Barry that is the brother of Kari Bradley, Kari Bradley?
Marka Stebetsner.
Yep. To see how much they might charge us for an invasive species study. Inventory, I guess they wanna call it an inventory, right?
You know, on this, on, should we...
MCS might have the right money for that.
I've got a question for you on this, and this is on invasive species side with Emerald Ashmore. We are allocating money, you know, for mitigation on these things, we, this is something...
Yeah, something, that's something you wanted to do, right?
Right, I just don't, well, I need some opeliers to, it's very expensive to go in and remove these trees in the road.
Yes.
I mean, we've got, this is where, DPW, we want, we work on this, but we are on a bit of a time clock, you have about six years, the time they affect, it affects the tree to the time it becomes... Anyway, sorry, just a...
I don't know.
Well, Rick, what are you proposing specifically?
Would that go under highway or would that go under conservation?
I don't know, we'd wanna be, and, uh, I think probably conservation, I would think, don't you?
I would too.
And then that's, quite, question is...
So is that really just bumping that invasive species up more?
But, but the Emerald, yeah, I guess the Emerald Ashmore is an invasive species that's gonna require, I think you said some kind of, they might have to hire somebody to cut down...
Well, that's why these opeliers is actually, they've methodically going through kind of road by road, and within the right of way, taking out the ash, and then they're preserving like three.
And aren't they inoculating some?
There are a handful, two or three, yeah, Paul Kate's been...
How do they decide which ones to inoculate, just...
They picked, like, we get this Paul did.
Are they already impacted, that's why they're cutting?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
These opeliers impacted?
Yeah, we've got, I'm sure we've got them here, we've got, Paul's got them on his land, which is right next to cows, I mean, it's right on the county road.
So, so do we wanna take, it used to be five hundred a shot, I remember that number from the training that we all did, so instead of two thousand, do we wanna say, well, and also there's the cutting, do we wanna even say ten thousand? Do you have a number?
Yeah, even, whatever we can put, I mean, it's expensive to have done, usually do a road at a time, that's logistical.
We just need a number, though, Rick, that's what we're gonna do, we don't have time to do the analysis of what if...
I would say, put in ten or fifteen thousand to start, and then we'll figure it out.
Really?
It's not cheap, I mean, yeah, these are tree cutting, yeah.
You know, I mean, this is a zany thing, but, um, five years ago, there were a number of softwood trees that were hurting or dead, and they were leaning over the wooded section between my property and the Graham farm, and I got so sick, every day I'd come down, there'd be another hunk of tree, and I'd have to stop and go back with a chainsaw or wouldn't go around another way, so I went with my tractor bucket, and I just pushed the trees, I just to and fro, pushed the trees, leaned them into the woods, so that when they did fall apart, they fell that way, and, I mean, short of cutting every single tree down, which is a lot of work and bucking them up, um, if the trees are dead, I mean, we have, we have bucket load, you just push them.
Well, the problem is, with, with the Emerald Ashmore in particular to this?
Yeah.
About two-thirds of the way up the tree, you get a weak spot, and they snap there, and this is common among all these populations, so it makes it very, very dangerous.
So that, so that...
Tons drop out of these trees.
Same with spruce budworms, same identical thing.
Okay, so guys, this is really fascinating, thank you.
And we haven't panicked.
But...
No, I get it, it's just on a, well, we've got six...
Spruce budworm's been here for sixty years.
So I put in fifteen thousand, and we have eight thousand for the fund, and I made a note that we, that it's thirteen thousand with the idea that we might, we're cutting some ash trees and inoculating some.
Okay, so can we go back to, do we wanna just put something in there for recordings, just put the same amount in for recording minutes, education and training, and cleanup? Okay.
And then expenses? We budgeted, they don't seem to use it.
I think we just put it zero.
Yeah, okay. All right, so then, SLIM fund, I think we'd said we were just gonna put in fifteen hundred, because we don't know what's going on over there.
Right.
Which is what we budgeted last time.
Right, so we budgeted for several years.
And I don't, yeah, and I don't think we tried to go over, I don't remember this year.
Right. And then we have a bunch of town hall numbers that it looks like we already talked about, because some of them are different than the year before. Uh, we didn't make any notes, so that suggested to me that we just were...
In agreement.
Well, that we were making guesses, that they didn't come from...
Yeah, I don't even know, I don't think, we can see, but I don't think it's gonna cost us twenty-four hundred for janitorial. Donna's gonna be doing, she gets two hundred dollars...
A month.
A month.
Times twelve.
Twenty-four hundred.
So it might cost us...
That's right.
It might cost us twenty-four hundred.
Okay, here we go.
There's the number.
Where's the number?
Okay.
That was good.
Um, and then phone internet, we had a question...
Yep.
That we think we only get one bill, but we can't tell.
Oh, okay, well, maybe we, can you highlight that? And do you wanna ask Wendy?
What did David Healy say? There was an estimate that was sent around on what the fiber optic is gonna cost us.
Yeah.
We may want more, as much toward that as a phone bill, because we may...
It says, "Monthly subscriptions start at seventy-nine dollars a month for a hundred, over a hundred megabytes, and up to two thousand, two hundred, two thousand, two thousand, whatever that means, for a hundred ninety-nine a month." I think the town office is the only location that could benefit from the higher speed subscription. So I don't know how we want to budget for this.
What is...
I think he said that they're anticipating...
That's his email.
Connection body in the first quarter.
Yes.
So if we figured three-quarters of the year at that rate, what's the differential between that and what we're paying? Because we could do voiceover internet protocol.
Yeah, that's what we've got on there.
So what he's, yeah, so he's saying, so the two, the two numbers Denise means upload, download, a hundred, a hundred, upload, hundred, upload...
And then the other one is two thousand, two thousand, that seems like, that's really fast.
Well, but a hundred upload and a hundred download, none of us even know what that's like, why do we need any more than that even at the town office?
Big map files and stuff. But is it that much more, is doubling or more than doubling?
It's more than double, it's two hundred dollars a month.
Can we kinda come up with it in, in between over here?
I don't know, what, do they back up the servers every night?
Oh, they do, Arby Tech does.
Yeah, and there's a lot of...
But it's up, they might back up only the differential, though, not necessarily, 'cause what changes in the town offices every day's gotta be miniscule. But, fair point, it says up two, so there must be some middle range. So what if we budget a hundred dollars a month?
So that's twelve hundred. What do we have now?
We already have fifteen hundred.
Okay, leave it the same, okay.
Just leave it at fifteen.
And again, as we've always been, budgets are best guess projections.
It is, I mean, and we have no idea...
We'd be kinda shy, if we'd go over, that's...
Well, sometimes we just have no idea.
Hang on, gang, and we have the CBF broadband extension in line one fifty-one.
Which that was money that, I don't think that ever got spent, John. Remember, we budgeted that?
They kept saying you'd...
They were, "Get your invoice in, you better..." Well, and, because this was for the project that was up here, and we, remember, you suggested we have this amount of money, they never got it done.
I think David told us that they just ate that.
Yeah, they did.
Okay, so that's something different, um, so I'm... Yeah, I'm gonna, hang on, I'm gonna refine our notes, ask Wendy about combining with another line.
Right, town hall, town hall, town office.
But, leave at fifteen hundred because we discussed, um, based on David, each email about the fiber costs. So, in other words, I'm trying to make a note that we already, we made a decision about this number, we're not asking Wendy about the number, we're asking Wendy about just combining it.
Right.
Okay.
Town hall reserve fund. If we can, I think we should leave it at ten.
That again, is based on the one...
One percent.
Yeah, one percent.
Value of the building.
Right.
Building's valued at a million.
One percent. I think it's actually budget, I think it's valued at more than a million, but I think we kinda went with a million.
Okay.
Gave them up with that figure. Um, insurance, we don't have much say over that.
Hang on, I've got a town hall building reserve fund.
Yep.
And is that, that one doing math, okay, so it's, okay. Insurance, uh, I will highlight these, ask Wendy's for you, Denise?
Yes, please.
How do we do this? So Curtis Pond Dam, bond gets passed, and everything goes according to the best, you know, hope, the plan, I should say, to commence construction upon approval of the bond, this construction's upcoming construction season. Once that is completed, then we're going to need to add that to our listed insured properties.
Once it's completed and then the town takes ownership.
That's correct.
Won't that be in the next fiscal year?
Not if they're, not if they stay on John's right.
It's gonna be in this upcoming.
No, I mean the following.
No, they're gonna finish by fall.
Are you looking at finishing in FY twenty four?
The guy, the guy who was, what was his name?
Three months.
Mr. Tucker.
Jeff Tucker.
Jeff Tucker, it's gonna be done by fall and then there's gonna be the, we take ownership.
How much that might cost?
Well, you know, it's maybe it's not replacement value, it's three quarters of a million dollars to replace it, so it's probably similar what we're paying on this.
Yeah, and one percent of.
But there's li, greater liability, they're gonna have to come up with a number for us.
Okay, so CPA needs to, where's my thing?
The LCT needs to give us a number.
So I'm gonna ask Mark. Projected insurance cost to town, right?
Yeah. And it needs to cover both liability and maintenance or whatever, damage, whatever you call it.
I'm adding a line, Curtis Pond Dam, sir, on the assumption the town takes ownership.
Without vote, public vote, right?
No, not after vote, after the work is done.
Construction is completed.
Oh, I see, I see.
So where did you?
I put it under, under liability.
Okay.
Perfect. And this is a VLCT?
Mm-hmm.
You probably wanna take that, would you put it in grants and just put it in the comments? Pass me.
Um, yeah, we were, this, none of this is going, this is not what's going with them.
Okay, town office bond.
That is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, those things, we don't really have a lot to say so over. And the loan that we took off to pay off the debt, even if it's paid off, you have to leave three fiscal years in your budget. Even though it shows zero, you have to leave it three fiscal years.
Where are you?
Aren't we down, aren't we under long-term debt?
Yeah, but I don't see any zeros.
Well, it's, yeah, if you look under reduce FY fifteen, sixteen deficit. It shows zeros for FY twenty four.
And all the other numbers were.
That's, they are, they are.
Okay.
Wait, so why do we leave the amount in there Denise?
Well, you have to, you, you have to leave those, that line item in for three years after it's paid for.
So you have the comparables for a nice long tail.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, okay, we're not budgeting, we're just leaving.
Right, you just have to leave it.
The information.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And the server loan should get started, eventually that should get wrapped into tech, which we have capital fund for now.
Right.
Tax abatement, we put a little bit in. And that brings us up to, okay, so just for fun, without even having a lot of, a lot, a lot of numbers still missing. Or way high, we're super high.
Double.
We are probably ten percent without
Ten percent, yeah.
Um, doing the math here. And that's what number's still outstanding.
Not quite ten percent, but.
It's high.
Something.
Hang on, let me get a, a real number.
It would be fifty, five thousand, eight hundred-ish, you know, within so.
It was ten?
It was ten, so it's, yeah, I mean.
It's six percent over, so we're six percent over. But that's the, the, well, that's, which is not, which is, which is.
That doesn't include salaries.
Which doesn't include a bunch of stuff, there's still a bunch of stuff in there.
So I think we just leave it like that now, can, can you put in there right now that it's? The current figure is six percent? I'm gonna be able to get this document already.
This is.
Yeah, it's literally in the folder.
This is the shared doc.
So, so everybody just, I know everyone knows how to do this, but I always have to figure it out again, over and over every single time. So how you do the percentages, how I do it, is I divide the larger number by the smaller number, so I'm taking that five nine three, four oh five, and I'm dividing five five eight one oh seven into it. And that tells me one point oh six, so that's six percent over. So it, so Denise, as we, so everybody knows, we're all doing the math the same way.
Yep.
And we can all do it just, because that six percent is no good as soon as we add more numbers.
Right.
Right, um, but actually, hang on. Um, well, what I will do when I get home, when I can.
We just put a formula in if you.
I'm gonna put a formula in the box below and so it'll change as the numbers change.
So we, we heard anything on our healthcare plan in terms of, is that gonna stay steady or?
I think. I saw something that Wendy said.
I can't see that staying flat or relatively flat.
No, she, I don't.
Crazy, this is the last.
Maybe I did bring it, but she could, well, that's why I want her to look at this and fill in the, the figures.
I do think, I raised this question last time and we haven't said it, had, haven't said, but we should be thinking about what we feel like we can tolerate. Because we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to come up with what we can tolerate and then we're gonna have to go down to it.
Well, I think it's more where the taxpayers can tolerate.
Well, that's what I mean, it's, we have to decide what we are willing to defend and protect to taxpayers.
Right.
I'm, I'm wondering what's gonna happen, I just heard this house in Scott Hill sold for seven hundred and five thousand, we heard that the house across the road from these Calistore sold, from Jeremy sold for five hundred, right on Route fourteen. I'm wondering, so when the state education form just starts getting applied, are they gonna like have rainfall into the state fund, are we gonna see that come back? Are we gonna just get creamed?
Our common.
Cause we're not a parody.
We're at seventy nine percent already.
Yeah. It's gonna, our tax base, well, that's why, that's why you do a reappraisal.
I know, I know, but.
To put everything back together.
If we done a reappraisal last year, it'd already be outdated.
Right, right.
It's so crazy right now.
Well, and this thing that we got, or something Jan said, it was seventy nine point ninety nine. The listeners were hoping for eighty.
We barely missed, we barely, well, we barely dropped.
Yeah.
But, um, well.
It's a statewide phenomenon, I don't know if they'll let it, they just have to look at this, people are being grammar.
Well, and that's why everybody, that's why there's not enough appraisers to do all these reappraisals.
Right, right.
It's, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, the point of the education fund is so that we're all sharing equitably in the cost of education, but what's really gonna drive it is that everything, well, it's two things, right? We've been below, but not so far below that we had to adjust, so when we, when we get caught up, if you will, then we're gonna see a bump as we start picking up our fair share.
Right.
But then the fair share of what? Of enormous expenses, because everything is going up so much.
But the, the value of the, the real estate has gone up faster than expenses, as, as great as
Rates should drop.
Ten or eleven percent.
The rates will drop and they still, they still raising the money, they still.
That's right.
That's just a volatility.
Well, I asked, I did ask Jan, I was talking to Jan, and I asked ourselves, so what do we do right now? She said there's really nothing we can do until the reappraisal.
I mean, where we, where we would really have to worry is if Callis was, was, was growing at a pace enormously different than other towns, but we're not.
No.
Everybody's.
The legislature just redow during this period of disruption, they should just apply a number across all, percentage to every town, so we're not spending all this time and effort on reappraisals, it's nuts.
Right, just give us all a factor.
Just give us all a factor and done, and then, I mean, think of all the money being spent on this.
All the money spending on what's spent, coming up with that number.
Yeah, it's, it's still smoking here.
Anyway, this is, yeah, very fascinating.
Appraisals are, are based on, are retrospective.
Yeah.
They're not prospective and they're wrong as soon as they do.
So we know the guy, we know the guy to talk to.
Right, can we do highway?
Yeah, let's do highway, you guys have numbers?
I do not, really.
Okay. How are we gonna get numbers so that we can finalize and bless a budget in one week?
Well, I'm gonna meet with Wendy to do all the other stuff, Rick, can you come up with numbers?
I don't know how to get, I don't know what we've got on our grants.
Well, now, well, wages, that's different.
Yeah.
But if, we're looking at this stuff. This stuff here Wendy can fill in, and what I'm pointing to is the insurance and all that stuff. Um, but education and training, so far this fiscal year, we haven't spent anything.
Hang on, let me break this down, I'm gonna highlight FICA, VEMRs, 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 insurance. I'm gonna highlight, all that is yellow for Wendy and Denise.
Right. And then we're gonna talk about wages later. Okay.
I think we do do an education and training, because we've got some things that we'll wanna be doing.
Okay, so let's put in, let's just put in five hundred.
Right, that's where.
Okay, uniforms. Were, in FY twenty two, our actual was fifty five. So why don't we just put in fifty five hundred? Or fifty six?
I would do that, right.
Let's do fifty six. Okay, equipment hired. Actual that we've spent so far this year is.
What's MRGP fees?
Oh, this is a general permit, that's gonna stay the same, fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
You got that right.
It says fifteen ninety.
That's what it is.
Right.
Okay. Um, equipment hired.
Yeah, and that's, we put, this was to cover any everything like hammer drills and things like that, or if we have to hire a special.
We just talked about like cement mixer you hired the other day.
Yeah, when they rented.
We had to do that, yeah, for the bridge, yeah.
So we budgeted in FY twenty two, twenty thousand, we spent two hundred and seventy. FY twenty three, we're budgeted ten, and so far we've only spent under a thousand.
Right, twenty five hundred we put.
I think twenty five hundred's good. Roadside milling, I don't even know why we have a figure there, because we do our own now.
Yep.
So can that just be zero?
Well, we, we thought about having a person, a summer help person hired, that's what that went to pay up.
That was it.
Because, because, right, but it was based on a representation by our then room commissioner saying that
They didn't have time.
His folks are straight out doing other projects and who'd even pay for that, so we didn't wanna see that. So the idea was to have that money available to hire.
That's right.
Someone.
Well, we can keep that, I mean, right now, we've got Ogden who does not have a CBL rights, so we, the only, he can run the tractor and.
Right, so we don't need to budget that.
So we don't need to budget that, just put in zero.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause he'll just get.
Let's see which one.
Um, right here.
Right here, it's this one, right?
Right, yeah, so put in zero.
Oh, you're doing that? Okay.
It didn't show up.
It is, it's blank.
Oh, wait, now it says equipment, there might be maintenance, line two oh two, and by the way.
No, we're on two oh three.
Oh, two oh three. What? That's miscellaneous.
There's this roadside milling equipment.
Equipment, we got, we need to do work on that tractor.
We do have to do work on that, so.
Probably five grants worth of work, because we're gonna get all the wishings changed and poses that haven't been changed.
All right, miscellaneous. What is miscellaneous, do we know?
Miscellaneous is miscellaneous.
We always seem to spend money.
Right, well, five thousand miscellaneous seems high.
But we spent eighty seven hundred in FY twenty two and only budgeted three.
But we have, we don't know what, where that went.
Well, okay, so let's do, maybe we should do like six or six to five hundred.
You know what, let's do nothing, because we should find out what's, what we need money for that we haven't budgeted.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Right.
Good.
Yeah, where did that go and then?
Sand and gravel.
I think we're good on, well, we've got, we have an ex, yeah, we should be good, we've got an excess of sand and we've got, so we're buffered there. Gravel, we definitely wanna hold that number, we may even want, we might wanna upper that up.
I don't think budget wise we're gonna be able to do.
Okay, then we won't, okay.
Is bridges in culverts, right?
Yeah.
Seems like it. Pavement crack and seal, are we gonna have to do anything on county road this year?
We definitely will, we'll do.
Cause we did Blighton Ridge last year, right?
You already got a number on that.
Yeah, seven two thousand.
Yeah, we wanna, any cracks that, or we want any preserve.
Rosin stones, the heavy stone you put in the ditches, right?
Yeah, it's, it's like, uh.
The rip raps.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it looks like.
Well, it can be anything from inch and a half up, you know, up to type one, type two.
So we wanna leave it at four?
Yeah, I think so.
Road salt? We put in eight, some, we have some figures in here, so we must have done something.
Yeah, that's what we.
So the magic salt did not work?
No.
For all the bragging, what happened?
I don't know.
I'm not sure that it, they were applying that right where they were, I mean, I knew the wog that they were. You know, the magic, the treated salts, they definitely work, but I don't know, I'm not gonna, I think that they, I need to dig deeper into that and find out, and we already have our salt for the year.
So should we put anything in there for next year? Like fifteen hundred maybe?
Now, let's get, you know what, let's, let's leave it for now, because we're gonna be.
Well, we're gonna have to decide pretty soon here.
It's all right, just, let's go with what we've got for right now, we've already got our salt orders in here, so.
Okay, so nothing for magic salt?
And we'll make it, once we get our DPW, we'll make decisions around this.
I know, but the problem is, are we putting a figure in for magic salt or not?
I know what you're saying.
I think we should just put the same number we did last year.
Thousand.
Okay, thousand, that's fine.
Is that right for Claude?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Road signs.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Boy, FY twenty two, we went way over budget. They would stop, stop stealing the signs.
We were having huge thefts on this and I don't know if it's.
Can I ask a question, is it because of an aesthetic reason? We have guardrails where the drop off is two feet, three feet to a stream, and I get why. You come down Foster Hill.
Or your road.
My road.
Or Singleton.
Singleton, but you come down Foster Hill, you have the drop off to number ten across from that farmhouse that
Yep.
Peter Bart Bachman rents out.
I know exactly where.
Just below that, it is scary. And I, I, on slippery days, I'm like, boy, I lost it, that thing, I'd be.
Same thing on mine.
According to, you know, and you look at Ashton standards, which are the robust standards, if it's a one, three or steeper, you have to have guardrail.
Well, that's a cliff and it's all.
You can't afford to put guardrail over, you know, because we have ninety percent of the state, so I get it, it's a risk, I mean, that's not, I mean.
I'm just wondering why, over the years, it seems like that is probably the most, if the word is treacherous, sort of, the steepest embankment, longest and steepest embankment you have in town. And, and it's, and it goes unguarded and then we have, we put guardrails everywhere else, I don't understand it. But maybe it's because there were grants with the other projects and that's why we got the guardrails, there's no grant.
So you wanted us to update the amount?
No, just.
This is.
I'm curious, line striking, seven, guardrails, okay, so we got quite a few of the numbers. And you had already gone through and said still have truck gone.
We did that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we did that a couple of weeks ago.
Right, so we're doing that.
So we don't need any more this year?
What we need there was the, the numbers from Wendy, I mean, the actuals, right, so our actuals are up to date. Maybe for some of these.
Yeah.
Well, we didn't, but we had no budget in twenty three for any of these.
Right.
Serious, right, there's not.
There's nothing there.
Mm-hmm.
We have a twenty thousand.
Expenses are either, if we had expenses, actually, we've got to have, we've got to have Wendy, the.
Yeah, but Rick, this is just maintenance, we have forty one thousand, we have forty one thousand so far. Oh, maintenance, yeah, well, kidding. Oh, and look at the year before, we only had twenty thousand in maintenance.
And we spent, actual so far for FY twenty three is fifty five. And we budgeted.
Hang on, what's that? What are you looking at? What are you looking at?
I'm looking at line two thirty-seven.
Oh, the actual, but so go up to line two nineteen.
Yeah.
Line two nineteen, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear about what I was saying and what we're all saying. So, in actual FY twenty-two, the actual expense was less than twenty thousand, which goes to the point we've been making about a lot of missing and deferred maintenance. And now, in a catch-up year, we are getting close to being over budget, and we're only halfway through the year. So.
Well, yeah, the guys have been doing a lot of that, we should save those money by not sending it to a shop, but we may find.
Still very expensive.
Yes, so that goes to, okay, so we don't have a budget number in two nineteen, we should have one. So we, in FY twenty-two, we budgeted fifty-five, we knocked it down to forty-five, because we, all we saw is that it wasn't getting used. Now what we know is it should have been getting used.
Right.
Maybe we should go back up to fifty-five or even sixty.
Well, where are we at now, so right, budget FY twenty-three, we budgeted twenty, twenty-three.
We budgeted forty-five thousand for maintenance.
Forty-five thousand, but then.
Forty-five, that's fuel, gas.
Fuel and gas, so yeah, I would say fifty.
Equipment, we're, at least, I would.
I'd say sixty.
Sixty.
Line two nineteen, are you guys up to?
Two nineteen, that's what I'm talking about. Sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we're gonna, yeah, we got a lot of catching up that's.
Well, and the rough seasons right now, where something gets busted.
And my season.
Yeah, we had shoes already, we're gonna fix them.
And then fuel, gas, and oil, that two thirty-six line, that's something different, and we put that one at seventy, so now we're at one thirty for this whole section. Which I think is baked, because everything else was actual purchasing costs.
Right. And then we got the town garage, which I think we.
Can I just ask one more question, though? On all of these vehicles that we still have, the ninety-seven Grader, the ninety-seven John Deere Grader, and the Caterpillar, I assume that these are all paid for, which is why those budget lines are zero?
Yeah, we bought them.
Yeah, those are paid for, so they're not under the equipment purchases.
Okay, so this is.
We do have, yeah, we got two new trucks coming, right, so, one of them is being fit up now, so we have to have the cost. Figure that load, and then we've gotta have, we're also gonna have the, the one ton.
So those two lines, that's line two thirty-three and line two thirty-four, we have placeholders for three pieces of equipment, the twenty twenty-three Westar Dump ten-wheeler, the twenty twenty-two Ford F-six hundred, and the dust control portable sprayer. So those three lines I'm gonna highlight, because those are going as a.
Dust control portable sprayer, we're gonna, okay.
It says looking for.
Right, that was, yeah, okay.
Do you have a number of?
I don't, I don't, so I've got.
Okay, so these are, or we gotta check these out?
Hang on, though, Rick, let's, as a practical matter, I think we've had quotes on the Westar and the Ford, but the dust control portable sprayer and tank that we might buy or build, can we just come up with a number right now?
Yeah, we can.
What, I mean, what, what does that kind of thing cost?
I would say, you know, we have the option of repairing the one we've got, or, you know, putting a new pump on it, so. I would say, you know, if we put in, oh, eight thousand dollars, we're probably good, I mean, I.
Okay, there, it's done.
Okay, town, town garage, we did this already, we already did this.
I think we should camera the garage. We've talked about it, actually, we're some assumptions, and we need to get cameras off the, on the building toward the fuel tanks. And we need to just have, you know, have the area camera, it's cheap enough, I mean, it's not inexpensive, but it's cheap enough.
Well, we've budgeted forty-five hundred, that should be enough, right?
Where's the computer we need to add?
No, communications, security, line two forty-six.
That was it, you're right.
Forty-five hundred.
Yeah, we did, we put.
Oh, okay.
And we, and we put in a computer for that, for the shop too, I think, right, that's what.
Yeah.
The radios and paging, that's gonna be the wild card.
Oh, that's gonna be more, because we need to put, we need to look into getting all new equipment, we wanna put a radio in the mower, we wanna see about upgrading our.
Our truck radios are not, they can't, they can barely communicate with each other, they can't across town.
What is a radio issue?
Is it just like a bull or is it?
Talking about the issue?
Well, that's a question here, we don't, it's probably both. The question is, do we, you know, what we've, I've already talked to Green Mountain Power, I've talked to Washington Electric, and I've talked to Eastmont Peely. I wanna actually bring everybody together to talk, so we can actually talk to each other, and, you know, because we, we had to pull out power company trucks during this last storm, and they're having to go through me, and I'm having to reach somebody, and it's.
So what does a radio cost, and how many do we need?
At least I don't know yet, because we, we still, we're just in the start of this, so.
So we have one base station, we have two base stations, we have one in the garage, and then we have one at the clerk, right?
Can you research, do you have, are you, yeah, I signed, no, I didn't sign this in.
Question is whether we go digital, or whether we go, here, you know, right now, everything's analog here, and then the digital apparently have much better, much better signal strength.
Problem with digital is, you either got it, or you don't.
Or you don't, you're right.
With analog, you get it, and it's fuzzy, and Rick's coming in fuzzy, and John's hearing fuzzy, but he's still hearing, it's either on or off for digital.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Well, and it's a problem, because a lot of the people around us are using analog, that's why we actually wanna talk to everybody, to kinda come up with a plan to work forward.
Right, but the trouble is, we need to put a figure in.
Okay, let's do this, because we're not ready for this, let's plan this year, let's just, let's stick a number in there for a radio.
Yeah.
We, I would say we want to turn up for two radios, let's, I'm gonna. Yeah, he's, that's, should be fine, because that way we can have one, I mean, I wanna make sure that, like, I've got one or somewhere where I can, or whoever the DPW is, we can actually talk to the guys if we get a call. Or if, and then we've, do we, we've got one at the town clerk's office, right?
Right.
So, yeah, we'll need one for the tractor, so.
We need, we need to have four base stations, or two, three base stations.
Well, two, if we got two that.
Well, a DPW guy's gonna need one, yeah, clerk's office and clerk's office.
Clerk's office has one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you're talking about additional, yes, so.
I'm just talking about our existing system.
Portable on a tractor, a base station on, for a DPW person.
Yeah, yeah, that's for, that's right, and I can take that.
And a DPW person is gonna need one for their vehicle.
And, you know, there may be a way to get a grant for some of that.
Oh, really?
Right.
Possibly, but the question is, we, we definitely wanna put one on that tractor this year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I would.
Okay, I wrote that in as a swag, five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, and then the insurance piece.
This is a, isn't this a Wendy?
Yeah, I just can't see the rest of it yet.
I'm getting there.
Okay, yeah, that's a double check with Wendy question. We're just gonna have to guess at this grant stuff.
I think so, I mean, I, I'm not sure how we can.
Well, I do, we had fifty-five thousand budgeted in FY twenty-two, we had forty thousand budgeted last year.
Well, no, wait a minute, we had.
For grants?
For actual in FY twenty-two, we're at fifty-five.
Hmm, okay, actual.
And then we didn't, there's no budget numbers in here for FY twenty-three, but we've spent forty.
We received forty.
That's a good question, which is, which is it?
Oh, grants.
Or is this money that comes out, and then we get reimbursed if we have our act together to do that?
No, this is, I think this is our, what we've paid, isn't it?
This is our match, you're saying?
I could think.
I think it's our, those figures in FY twenty-two, I think are our.
See, I thought we expensed, and then we get reimbursed, I thought.
Yeah, that is true. Wendy sent us all this report.
These are expenses, but we, how much is, did we get reimbursed?
Okay, let's see. Sometimes she doesn't send highway, sometimes she doesn't. Town hall, um, what is this?
So we have anticipated revenues at, uh, very bottom, that grants, three hundred and sixteen thousand. Line two forty-five or seven, or whatever it is.
Okay, Wendy sent us this town council financial report, it's November twenty-twenty-two, and that's how I found out how much, figured out how much we had in the town hall fund. Where are we at? General highway maintenance, what is this thing called?
These are the.
Highway where you take expenses.
A lot of what, a lot of the grants that we receive at highway are, are matches in kind.
Now, see, this list here, we have Better Back Roads Grant, Moscow Woods, and Loose Road, because these were from the previous fiscal year.
Right.
So.
Loose Road's still going on, though, right, because that's the one that.
Right, we've gotta get the easements.
So, so what I would suggest is that we, we put a number in the, in the bottom. And, well, we, if the actual in FY twenty-two is fifty-five, and right now, as of November, what did I say, November of this year, this report Wendy sent all of us shows that we've spent forty thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. Which is what's in here.
Right.
This one sits four forty-five.
Yeah, four forty-five, thirty-one, right.
So, but that's only so far, and, and so I think the part that's a little unclear is whether this is our match, or whether most of it's gonna get reimbursed, and then.
Well, this report shows a hundred, actual budget, this shows a hundred percent. This report that she sent us.
What's happening, a hundred percent of what?
Right.
When we didn't budget anything.
Yeah.
It looks like in the past two years, we haven't budgeted anything under grants.
Yeah, there's nothing there for FY twenty-two.
I don't know.
And, but this is.
I think these are expenditures that are reimbursed, it's why we're not budgeting.
Right, so, and we haven't budgeted in the past two years, so let's just not budget.
All right.
It's working, we get money.
Well, we can, we can't know what grants are gonna be available, or what we're, or what we're gonna be awarded.
Right.
The que, uh.
We don't know.
The question I've got is on this, and is how do we, you know, we probably, we've got the Moscow Woods, with that project, we've gotta keep going. And then that, and the estimate on that can be is, you know, a hundred and ten thousand, we've got an eighty thousand dollar grant, so we would probably wanna have additional capital in there.
So that there's not match, that's not in kind, that's actual dollar amount?
That's the grant now.
No, 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 but.
Well, we have to.
The grant's eighty.
Right.
Total cost.
Twenty, right?
Yeah, but is there in kind availability for batch?
Well, that, but you're, I think the cost of the actual replacement isn't gonna be covered by, it's gonna be over a hundred, I think it's gonna be a hundred and ten.
And we're hiring out a lot, it wouldn't be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's gotta be, yeah.
Are you saying we should budget a hundred and ten?
We don't, no, 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 four, but I would lay thirty or so, I would think to be safe, so, because this is gonna be.
So the new line.
You mean, you think we're not gonna get all the money we need through grants?
Well, we haven't got enough, we've only got an eighty thousand dollar grant, so we, and the cost of that replacement, you know, I mean, not replacement, but that cost of that repair is gonna be potentially.
But what we have, is that a two-year fiscal year project?
No.
No, it's just.
And this is only the temporary?
It would be the temporary fix, then we gotta do that.
Main fix.
Right.
Well, temporary for ten years.
Right.
No, no, we maybe have three, four, we gotta, that's, yeah. That's a.
All right, I put in thirty thousand for East Cal's bridge repair.
Do it, okay.
Um, and then cap, now we have another capital expenses, which.
Put in temporary repair on that, okay, because this is not, definitely not.
Yep, good idea, good idea. Now we have another capital expenses, so.
Just wanna say, we did a temporary fix on the bridge on Pekin Brook Road when Si was here.
Yeah, no, like.
It's still there, we still haven't replaced the bridge.
How's it doing, yeah? It's still there?
Yeah, that was a temporary fix, that was fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
So this one, this is a little different.
What is the difference, what? So the Moscow paving grant is different than the East Cal's bridge repair?
Oh, yeah, 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 that was the, oh, excuse me, that's, that's probably the, uh.
Yeah.
I think we're all gonna get fading fast, and we still have to talk about salary, at least, or at least we need a discussion?
We got the numbers from Barbara, which came in like a Word form or a PDF, so I can go through, that's an easy task, I can go through and enter those.
For?
For all the people, all, all the, the.
Social services?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, okay, so do we wanna, now we have capital expenses. So. So we have some, some vehicles that, is this a redundant list to the one above?
Well, the one above is expenses related to equipment repairs on those vehicles.
And maintenance, and now this is.
This is like, how much is it cost to buy the truck?
So this, those three lines that we had highlighted above really belong down here.
Well, wait a minute.
You mean with, yeah, the new trucks?
The new truck.
Probably.
Yeah, these are loans.
That's.
Yeah, that's right, that's where they, they do belong down.
They belong down here.
We just have to.
Yep.
Pay stuff.
Yep, if you guys want, maybe I'll do that. So, I'm gonna leave the dust control portable sprayer up above, Rick?
Yeah, that's fine, that, that can be, because that is necessarily a replacement, we may just fix, we may not have the option.
We may not have the money.
Right.
To buy, we might have to fix it.
Right.
Okay, so where are we at?
Hang on, Rick.
Bottom line, I'm like, need the drum roll.
If you just copy the two whole line, each line, both of them, and then insert.
I, that's what I did, but then I, there, I'm gonna do it again. I thought that I.
I hate working in Excel when it isn't downloaded, if it's, we're working in Google Docs.
I know. It's harder, and yet it's nice, because we're.
You can see it, yeah, it's just a pain.
It's, you know what's hard is getting two lines together, which is what I was trying to do. Every line, I'm just gonna do them step one by one, one at a time. All right, can we do the old ones, so we don't get confused, okay.
Um, so you're gonna work on the social services?
I'll put those in, that's the key entry from Barbara gave us. Yeah, there's no point in talking about bottom line, because I don't, we don't have a lot of numbers on the, I mean, we wanna have a check of the, because they're all working prime.
Okay, so this is in the Google folder.
I was gonna stretch. That's all I wanna, no, I, I did something back.
This thing's like a place for shoes on a chair.
Happy no matter what. So, I think that we should, we have to go into a big discussion to talk about personnel increases, or budgeting, and then we have to talk about when we're gonna meet again.
Meet again, well, let's talk about that now, so that it's on the record.
That's what I'm thinking.
So can we just continue this meeting to Thursday evening?
Yeah.
What's the date, Thursday, today's the second? To the fifth, right?
Yep.
One, five. Um, at what time do we wanna meet?
Is Thursday better than Wednesday for people?
I'd see your day off.
Yeah, I'd rather do Thursday, except I have three nights in a row.
I can do either or both.
Um, okay, so Thursday.
I wonder.
But we're gonna have.
Because Thursday, if I do it by Thursday night, it'll give me longer period of time to try to catch up with Wendy.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
What time you think, Dee?
Can we do it at six?
Six, yeah.
Six, or do you wanna do earlier?
I, I have a client until five.
Okay, so you wanna do six?
But let's, we do it at six, everybody got six?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we don't need to do an agenda, because it's continued. Bye, Wendy, thank you for your time.
Here, here. Happy new.
Okay, so we're gonna continue.
Yep. And that's the fifth.
And I'll make sure that, um, it's available on the calendar. If it's not, we'll have to meet at the town office.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that at, and then we'll have to...
And we're going to have to meet again on the 9th, which is our regular meeting.
9th is a regular meeting, but I think we should assume that all we're doing is finalizing all this stuff.
No, we said we'd do the curzon dam permit stuff on the 9th.
Okay.
So I think if we do that and then just...
Is that a big discussion?
I, I don't think so. I put all of the stuff in the Google folder.
Yep.
So I think, I think we might be able to do it as consent.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Yeah, all right, so we want a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues under...
Personnel budgeting.
Personnel.
Budgeting, which relates to the performance of personnel.
It is under the Appointment or Employment. 313A3.
That's the motion?
It is.
Second.
Any discussion?
What time is it?
All in favor, please say aye.
8:33, aye.
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 8:33.